May 6, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Tonight will be a work session. It's a special meeting. And so I will not have to speak to any of the general public here tonight. But I will ask for the role so we can establish a forum, please.
Yes, Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Karazana.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Vivins.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk is not here at this time.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
You, any discussion? We have the role, please.
All righty, Mr. Karazana.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Vivins.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we are on item number three, work session CCP 2021-2 AC44, Comprehensive Plan Transportation. Turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Tanya Swartz and Drewber, Planning Manager for the Community Development Department.
Can I just send your app for one second? Ms. Firehawk is now here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just so I get on the recording.
Joined by several colleagues to talk about the transportation chapter of the comprehensive plan tonight. As per usual, we'll go ahead and go through a summary of feedback we've received, go through some community input, do a chapter overview and review the upcoming schedule and then really allow, that's the time for questions, comments, what have you on the actions. These are the couple of focus area topics that we have for you tonight. These probably need a little bit of lead in, but we'll do that part at the end as we usually do. So for previous feedback that we've heard from this body before on transportation within the development area, we've heard to prioritize investments in the development areas while focusing more on safety, rural recreation and rural character in the rural area. Also looking to enhance transit in the development areas, including expanding Microcat and then maintain a coordinated approach on trails and greenways to ensure connections to our denser, more populated areas. In the rural area, what we heard was let's use some data and community input to verify where people are already walking and biking. And then also incrementally, complete some improvements within coordination with VDOT, like shoulder widening. We also heard again, safety improvements is a priority in the rural areas and then provide a type and level service in the rural area, especially on-demand para-transit and commuter transit. So some of the community input themes that we heard, especially for the development areas, is providing safe, comfortable infrastructure like sidewalks and bike lanes for walking and biking that's separated from cars. That was the main theme there is keeping those two separated. And then transit needs to be frequent and reliable so folks can maintain consistent use. And then related specifically to cars, we need to slow the, the community feels like we need to slow the cars down, produce some parking requirements. And then there is that concern about traffic congestion and the infrastructure to keep up with that, with growth and not exacerbate that congestion. As always, safety is a concern. For the rural area, we really wanted to, what we heard from the community was to explore and implement ways to make walking and biking in the rural area safer, looking for small-scale improvements. That includes widening shoulders, adding signage and exploring off-street paths and trails. And then we need to look at continued transit options that are needed, especially in the urban areas that meet daily needs. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin McDermott.
Thank you. So to begin with, as we saw in these previous slides, you noted that there is a lot of different concerns that we heard from the public, the board and the PC related to the development area and the rural area. And I think that's kind of what we've been looking at for a lot of these chapters, especially in the land use chapters, the differences between the development area and rural area. And you continue to see this in the challenges that we've identified with transportation. They're different between the development area and the rural area. In the development area, we see a high peak hour demand. The multimodal networks are fragmented, meaning that there's a lot of breaks in them, especially our sidewalk and bike network. That there's limited funding and rising project costs in the development area. Those costs are driven by the right-of-way needs, the existing, the existing facilities, including utilities that are out there that have to be moved, stormwater, things like that. That's really important in the development area. And then the VDOT ownership of roadways, which they have higher requirements or really high requirements for their standards and very little flexibility there. And they manage those roads, so it's a little bit harder for us to move through approvals and getting projects completed in the development area. In the rural area, realistically, safety is our number one concern. We have narrow winding roads, a lot of them with little clear zones, a lot of them do not meet any standards. And we see a high rate of fatal and severe accidents because of that, including wildlife collisions. Additionally, we know that we have, you know, an aging population in the rural area that doesn't have access to transit service. And we see a lot of desire for biking and walking, for recreation and exercise. And that's from not just the people that live in the rural areas that want to be able to walk and bike around their homes, but also because it's such a draw for people that live within the development area to get out and want to bike or run on some of these rural roads, whereas more aesthetically pleasing and lower traffic levels. So based on those differences, we've created two different goals for transportation, one for the development area and one for the rural area. And the development area, our goal is really focused on increasing safe, comfortable and accessible multimodal options for all users. This is where we're really going to see, because of the density, a lot more people wanting, being able to walk and bike to their daily trips. And so this is really a focus of the development area and also utilizing place making to encourage more people to get out and walk and bike and use transit. Whereas in the rural areas, we are looking for to address the movement of goods. Of course, this is on our primary roads, including the interstate highways and rail. And then also connecting those rural area residents into their needs that they have within the development area, whether that's jobs, shopping, other hospital appointments, anything like that. So we really want to make sure that our rural area residents have good access to those things. So the overall transportation planning strategy here is that we want to support the land use strategies that are already outlined in the rural and development area land uses of AC44. This includes the growth management policy to direct future growth and density into development areas. And they have such a lower, the expectation that there may be lower levels of service and improvements found in the rural area as opposed to the development area. We've got to recognize that creating a high-quality multimodal transportation network takes a very long time and a lot of money. And so we have to be very careful about how we select projects and move forward with them to get the most effective projects built in the time we have. So future planning, future transportation is really needed to make sure that we can get down into the, identify the most important projects that we have out there. To do this, the, one of the primary recommendations from the, this plan, one of the primary action steps from this transportation chapter is to build, is to create a multimodal transportation plan. We recognize that within the bounds of the, the comp plan that we're working on now, there's too much detail that's required for a transportation plan. So our recommendation is to come back and work on that detail in a separate plan. Some of the elements that you would see in here would be things like articulate, articulating the long-term strategy for transportation planning. So looking at prioritizing projects over a long point in time and what we want to value in that prioritization process. To integrate the land use transportation planning and zoning so that we know that, that what we're proposing for transportation matches our recommendations for, for land uses in the development area. And what we're looking at for our zoning updates actually matches those things as well. We say that we want to delineate a multimodal, the modal emphasis networks. What that means is that we want to be able to go in to a transportation plan, look at where, specifically where people want to travel to and from throughout the county and how they might want to get there and identify those best routes for that. So that includes transit routes and bike routes and where we want to focus the pedestrian network as well. It will define typical cross-sections for future roadway design. And what that means is that by going through a multimodal transportation process in consultation with VDOT, we'd be able to develop what a road cross-section would look like for these different areas and then work with VDOT to make sure that we can implement those. That really tries to overcome that challenge of coordinating what VDOT wants to see in a road and what Almarl County wants to see in a road. It also will prioritize the projects given the limited resources and other constraints. So similar to our project prioritization that we've gone through in the past, it would really set up a system so that we could keep working through a prioritization process with consistent goals and really know what the important things we want to move forward with in transportation are. So with that, I'm not going to read through all these transportation objectives. Obviously, they were all in the chapter and they're all followed by all the action steps. High level, in the development area, the number one objective is the transportation plans. And I think the most important piece of that is that multimodal transportation plan that we're proposing. But it also is setting up how we want to go about doing area plans and corridor plans as well. So really important, the planning function of what we're doing with transportation. The second, second objective there is really focused on how we want to build out our bike and ped network. The third is about transit service. The fourth is really about the, the personal vehicle travel and how we want to make sure that road network works. And then the fifth one there is about regional and inner-city transportation. This is looking at our, our primary roads, our highways and interstates, as well as airports and rail and how we want to integrate that into the system. Then we've got the safety objective and how we want to move forward with safety, improving safety for users of the system. And finally, our, our goal related to greenhouse gases and climate change and how transportation is so important to addressing our climate goals. Moving on to the rural area, really, as I said, our priority with the rural area is to invest in projects that are going to improve safety. And we also, in concert with that, want to maintain that rural character on those roads. We want to, we want to improve the rural transit system, but I want to highlight that what we really want to do here is increase rural area residents' connections to things like commuter services. So what, you know, I'm kind of looking at this objective we have here, wondering if maybe we might want to think about the wording of that so that we, everyone understands what we're trying to do is not create new transit routes, fixed route transit that's going out into the rural area, that we want to focus our transit system in the rural area on these commuter routes, things that are already out there, Afton Express, you know, the connect routes that John operates and see him where they could stop in rural areas and putting park and rides out there. So really just giving access to those services, but also keeping in mind things like para-transit, which is a need that we have in the rural area and making sure that we can keep providing service like that. So then we get into the, the traffic fatalities and serious injuries, which I mentioned before, a major concern in the rural areas and improve the rural area community members equitable, equitable access to walking and biking opportunities. So this is really recognizing that those people that live in the rural area also would like places where they can walk and bike safely. And a lot of our rural roads are missing that. So finding some sort of program where we can identify some important resources out there that we can enhance for people. Bring it back to Tanya.
Thank you. We've, of course, transportation hits on several of our chapters, including both land use chapters, environmental stewardship, thriving economy and housing. So you can see how this is starting to all weave together. Our schedule coming up, we're here today to talk about transportation with you all. We'll be looking to May 28th to talk to board about the same issue and get their feedback. And then our last chapter is cultural resources, which you'll be getting via email in the next couple of days. We'll be coming to you on the 27th of May for that and board on the 24th. And last but not least, we have several ways that folks can engage with AC44, primarily through the Engage Almarl website is the best resource to get up-to-date information. So our chapters are shared there, any engagement activities, work sessions will continue to be posted on the main page. And then you can always sign up for emails and/or newsletters. So with that, I'm going to go back to our chapter focus topics. We can go through these one at a time and then go to talking about specific actions, however you would like to do that, Chair.
Great, really helpful. Thank you. It was a great chapter, too. A lot to pour through. Do you all want to start with, typically we start with just some high-level questions? If there are any clarifying questions that we might have for staff? Clarifying question? Yes, sir.
I'm curious, in the rural area, are there any roads that flood a lot? If the answer is yes, has it raised to a level where we need to be looking at mitigating that through the, through this work here? I didn't see much about flooding, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think maybe that's maybe partially wrapped into the idea of safety, making sure that our roads are safe, I think, and, and keeping them out of floodplain. But I agree, it's a, it's an element that we should be concerned with. And we probably, we really utilize, I guess, the, the knowledge base of our, our VDOT folks to help us identify those places where that's happened because they're always addressing those flooding. And then what we hear from people out in the field, but agree that that is something that we should keep our eye on and could be wrapped into that element of safety in the rural areas as well.
A point for staff is, I'm not sure if it raises to a point where you have to be explicit as opposed to implicit. So it's just something to think about.
Thank you.
I think that's a really important point. It's something that I've, I've thought about a lot. You know, a lot of railroads, they're built back in the day, sort of the path of least resistance. A lot of them were put right next to streams. And I don't know if it's practical at all, but I know that even on, on my road, on Sugar Ridge, I've long thought that it would be nice to actually take that road away from the stream where it is. You know, purchase another route to, to take the road to bring it away from, you know, I don't know, you know, how we can think about things like that. But I think in terms of all these, a lot of these roads in the rural area were never built sustainably in the first place.
Yeah, I wonder, you know, if, I mean, there's a section here, obviously talks about greenhouse gas emissions. So that's kind of going towards the sustainability. And I wonder if there's a way to think about the climate action plan, if there are ways like resilience, all that kind of, you know, to your point, maybe more frequent floods, et cetera, how that might be woven somehow into the transportation chapter is just one item that may be in action that could be tucked in somewhere to one of those others.
Chair, if I could, that will be addressed in our next session. We're going to be talking about cultural resources and then also our response to climate change and community health. So that action will probably show up in the environmental stewardship chapter.
Yeah, that's great. I wondered also, you know, as you were saying, the, the design, I think you were talking about of roads. If, if we're talking about 100-year floods, what does that really mean now?
Right.
This is kind of off into the, but have we changed our 10-year, two-year, 100-year flood assumptions and therefore adjusted our road designs to meet those new objectives or not? I don't know.
I mean, I know that's something that's like, actually shows up now as a criteria in smart scale. They were talking about that and trying to design roads that are more resilient to flooding, especially when you're at the state level, you're looking at a lot of stuff down the coastal zone.
Right.
But it, obviously, Mr. Murray's point, extremely expensive to move roads, especially to like get them out of a stream valley. In some respects, we're with all the priorities that we're competing against. You know, I'm curious how much resources we really have sometimes to be able to deal with some of those issues. And from Frank, I'm not quite sure how we do.
There's also, there's also situations where the culverts are now undersized. Where the type storms are getting. So that's not necessarily moving a road, but I can think of multiple roads that are blocked because the road, the creek is jumping the outside. It's hitting, the culverts are full and it's going across the road. If the culvert was bigger, the creek could still stay and it's lame, if you will.
Those places do.
Anyway, that, so that could be something that we, maybe we pay more attention to.
Yeah, we skipped to the last bullet on here, but those are, those are things that, yeah, it's all good. Those are things that we think might be missing, might be better integrated.
Some clarifying questions about some of the action steps. And actually, I think the multimodal plan, sort of taking all this and, and making a multimodal plan probably answers my first question, which is like, there's a lot of action items. I was going to ask if there's sort of some priorities, but it sounds like kind of the, that plan will sort of elicit some of the priorities as we go. I was just curious about some of the terminology and some, some things that I, you know, haven't really come across before and maybe others, we all know what these all mean, but I was just curious about a few things, if you don't mind indulging. One was in, in 2.2, talking about pedestrian bicycle infrastructure. Identify projects suitable as low-plan, no-plan projects. I mean, that sounds fun, but I don't know what it means.
So low-plan, no-plan are projects that we can, that, that might be smaller and faster to implement and that we may be able to do as the county in conjunction with, with VDOT, with very little construction detail, if you will. It's something that we can do in the field and just build a ramp.
Grab some quick creek and go. Yeah. All right. And then also looking at 4.1, 4.2, where we're talking about efficiency and connectivity of vehicular traffic. I was curious to hear more about what intelligent transportation systems and travel demand management, what these systems kind of look like and how they operate without having to go ball. It's just a jargon term that I didn't know about.
I was on the same page. I Googled a bunch of these.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
ITS, Intelligent Transportation Systems, I think that's really referring to things like connected signal systems, corridor signal systems that are, that can actually fluctuate and change their pattern based on the, the amount of traffic they're seeing at certain times. You even see now that some people are looking at AI as a possible opportunity for, you know, a system being able to learn how traffic patterns work and adapting signal timings to, to adjust to that. So that's really what ITS is. The, and then travel demand management, it, it sounds high-tech, but it's actually something that we see a lot already. It's, it's things like utilizing park and rides and ride-share programs. It meant in the, in the action step there, it does talk about the, the CA, the Charles Valmar MPO and TJPDC, they actually have a program to help do that that connects riders and supports van pools. So, so opportunities like that is what that's referring to.
And I think one of the things is, in a road system that we have, it's kind of mature and they're very expensive to expand. It's how do you get more efficiency out of that system? So that's what both those things are trying to do.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. One of the, and, and with fewer state resources available for any expansion, I might add, at least based on what we saw the last, this year and the budget coming down the pipe. With, there's a part on daylighting some cul-de-sacs that was sort of further down in there, at least for bikes and peds. And I was wondering if there's anything, I didn't see anything in here about sort of daylighting cul-de-sacs or neighborhoods that only have one way in, one way out for actual cars. Realize that's an expensive sort of back, back adaptation. But, but boy, we've got a bunch of subdivisions where there's hundreds and hundreds of people living there and just one way in, one way out.
Yeah, I think they're great opportunities and something that when we talk about our zoning code and ways we can update our zoning code, those, those requiring those connections are something that we can, that we can work on. So when projects do come out, when development projects come in that are pushed by the private sector, we can work with them to try and create those. As you say, it's something that's very expensive if we try and do it as a county, but there, there are opportunities. And I think the, part of that idea with the, with the improving vehicular connections, I think that's really trying to get at that, trying to make sure that we've got a network or a gridded, more of a gridded system. I know it can't be a perfectly gridded system, but something with those connections to give people more options to get around. And I agree, it can be done for vehicles just as much as bike and ped.
Yeah, not everybody in my neighborhood would agree with me, but it's really difficult to only have one way in and out. You know, I find that personally very frustrating sometimes. And then there's a surprising number of neighbors just like that, not just the ones from the 60s. And then the last thing, it's not even really a question, but it's something I was thinking about looking at the, the section. We've had a lot of conversation here and elsewhere about microtransit and Microcat in particular. And I don't know if it would make any kind of difference on kind of a cost-per-rider basis, but something that I found kind of interesting was UVA's transportation system has kind of the UTS on demand for nighttime that operates kind of like Microcat and that it's not fixed routes, but it's only like 50 particular destinations. And so, you know, it's like you, you can go from here to here, 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 but like, you know, it's not going to come to your doorstep, but it'll get, you know, kind of in the neighborhood. And I didn't know if that was kind of a middle zone that might help with some of the efficiencies on cost-per-rider.
Helpful, thank you.
Just to kind of continue to riff off a couple of your thoughts, there were a couple of places, as you're saying, that, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out who the audience is or will eventually be for this. Because there's some things in here that I think maybe many of us get, like understand the, the acronyms like TIA, micro mobility, ADA, pro, P-R-O-W-A-G, C-A-M-P-O. Yeah. ABC, all of those, just, you know, looking through this. Is, does it make sense to sort of describe each of those things that necessarily or have a?
A call out.
glossary or something that would help with it.
I think that's what we're kind, we're hearing. We take for granted that we know what those things are. But maybe we should have some sort of call out or even definitions, especially for this chapter.
Yeah, the jargon page.
Yeah, there you go. Cool. All right. Do we want to, any other general questions?
Yes, I, I remember some of our colleagues have suggested that you might want to think about collapsing some things, you know, like put some things together. For, for instance, I suggested to you under development areas is a look at some wordsmithing on objectives one and two, because they're basically saying the same thing. But I think there's probably a way that you could do that. And then under the, and then objectives three and five, that there's probably some language there that you could tame that down a bit and sort of make it a little, perhaps take some of the, by combining it, take some of the length out of it, the length out of it. Then under the rural areas, objectives one and three, perhaps think about. Then under the rural areas, objectives one and three, perhaps think about if that's possible to just perhaps collapse them together and then they, they complement each other and they would just flow to one. And then I've got other, other things once we go through the, we go through the, I will say that the explanation that was much more palatable to me than the document. And, and I can get into my, my annoyances then, but I, what you did in presenting it to us, if there's a way that you could put that into a chapter, I think would feel much more future focused and taking into consideration the various things that, that have come to us as opposed to much of this that just feels like, please don't ask me to have to consider this yet again, when we've considered this those many times before. So that's just me not being annoyed, that's all.
I didn't understand what you meant by consider it yet again.
That, that these are, these are similar, these seem to be the same kind of discussions we've had either over, over the course of many years.
Right.
That I will come to a point where I say, you know, some of what our issue is is that we're using 29 for several things. That's a function of a decision that was made in the eighties.
Right.
And so unless we can do something that talks about, here's the traffic that's through traffic, which is not even mentioned here. And here's the traffic that is, that is, that is, that is a connection to either local, but also the surrounding communities. How do we deal with some of that, those issues? And so that's part of like, you know, we've got a lot of traffic that comes through this community that's through traffic, that we would be having very different conversations about how we were managing our traffic. And also how we'd be managing our land if some of that traffic had been diverted someplace else in the county. Well, across my street, but that's, that's neither here nor there. And so I think we're, we're, we're trying to, to, to work with those sort of a quasi suburban traffic pattern when really we've got sort of a modest interstate coming that.
Right, and we also have this suburban development.
That's what I said, the mod, the mod, yeah.
That has isolated neighborhoods as little islands.
That's right.
And then now we're trying to kind of convert them into an urban grid retroactively, which is really hard to do.
Yeah.
And that, we're locked into a lot of the decisions of the past.
And that's the piece for me, when I was reading this, it's like, we've got some pieces here that unless we can retrofit it, I don't want to talk about, I will say it because everybody knows I get it, I, that's, I don't want to talk about multimodal. And when you show me page seven, and I see that multimodal makes up 4% of the transportation, commuting transportation, and we're not effectively dealing with the 66%. That's what I, that's when I think you start talking about quality of life. That's when I think you start talking about how are we making this place, a place that is dealing with the issues that were, that are embedded in our culture, embedded in our, in our community, that this is really nice, but we're not solving some of the, as, as Karen said, we're not solving some of the severe issues that are related to the disconnected, the disparate plant, development areas. That's the piece that I was hoping to see. How are we dealing with the disparate, the desperately dispersed or the dispersed development areas? That's the.
Yeah, and we do have the goal of trying to connect, like when you get a new development, trying to find a connection between two subdivisions. And then we get a lot of people coming in.
But that's not the piece, the subdivision is not the piece I'm talking about.
Yeah.
How do we connect Croze? How do we, how do we facilitate travel between Croze, Pantops and north of the Ravanna? How do we get people to the airport without having to drive your cars? I mean, we're just talking about what's the quality of life thing that we're trying to do here. And many of, I've heard many, many of us talk about, how do we get people out of cars? Well, what I read doesn't get me out of a car.
Right, like I, I, one of the sub actions I suggest in my, in my edits was, why don't we have any commuting opportunities to go to the airport?
Or to the train station?
We, you know, they, they mentioned the train station, but we left out the airport.
Airport's in here.
It's, it's in there, it's right after.
As having.
Who, I don't know if it has the connection.
I was looking for.
I don't get.
Yeah, well, I didn't, maybe I missed it. I, I know we talked about the airport.
It's a broad language.
But I was looking for it in the language that talked about providing access, you know.
That's, that's what I put it under too.
To, it only said the train station. I was looking for a transit also to the airport. People park their cars for seven days at whatever it is, nine bucks a day.
Yeah.
Well, they don't want to leave their car, their car, they're all week. You know, anyway, I'm just saying, I fly like almost every week, so I'm like really.
But there's a, I don't know if Charlottesville is doing it, but they are, we're getting sidetracked here.
Okay.
There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hotels that now participate in that you actually park in the hotels and they shuttle you over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they, I don't know if anywhere around Charlottesville they do it, but you can go to, to Dallas.
In this community, I would go, I fly to all these other airports and I get off and I can get places on a bus, a metro rail, a hotel shuttle. I get here and I've got Uber or a cab and there were no.
Or a friend.
Begging your friends to get you, yes.
Well, it's interesting because Mr. Vivins, you know, I think you're sort of talking on one of the central themes and it's supposed to be, it should be coming up and coming through, we would hope it was coming through, is that, yeah, 66% of commuters are, you know, single occupancy vehicle. And we're going to try and add 31,000 people to this development area or county over the next 20 years. So how do you do that without expanding the road network? And I think that's really what we're trying to directly take on by saying, I think we're certainly going to always encourage and support people who strive and need to drive. I mean, I just think that's who we are as a culture and as a country, and then we're not trying to in any way, shape or form sort of, uh, look adversely at people driving. But to be able to accommodate those other folks, we're going to have to look for other solutions. And certainly transit and biking are our opportunities in the relatively small area we're in. Now, well, we have a light rail, but no, we won't have a light rail to the airport either. So, I mean, I think some of our things are sort of commensurate with the size of the community we're in. I mean, you may have to take Uber from the airport, unfortunately.
Just little shuttle bus, just a little bus, don't need a light rail.
Anyhow, point, point really being, I, I would have hoped that, that, that message sort of came through, how we sort of recognize the limitations that are placed upon us as a community of being able to expand the road network to accommodate more and more drivers and recognize that that's going to be tougher as we get denser. We really have to focus on developing a strong plan that will connect these activity centers that will connect these destinations that people need to be and afford opportunities to, to use some other mode of transportation to get around. I think that's, that's hopefully is, comes across as a strong theme in the chapter.
Yeah, it's like there's, there's outs, outside in and inside in. Yep. So it's like outside commuters coming in, how do you solve that? That's partly the affordable housing conversation, right?
More parking rides.
Bringing people into Aspen from the workforce, people who live here.
Supporting regional transit.
Supporting regional transit, then there's the inside in piece, the part where there are commuters internally that are moving around. And if there are ways to look at it, you know.
And then there, there really is, I mean, that, that's the human part of it. Then there's the goods. We move a lot of goods on 29.
And 64.
You can, we can pretend that it's all about people coming in from Forest Lakes or Croze, but it's not. We move a lot of traffic down 29 because of a decision that was made that, that, that had a tremendous impact on how we use our land. But now we're trying to retrofit, I'm just going to use all, everything north of, of the Ravanna River that there's, we can hope that they, I'm not even going to pretend that, they're not going to, they're not going to bicycle or walk into the city. Then it's not going to happen. And so, and so my, my piece is, is on the margin, I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Barnes. On the margin, how do we sort, how do we both sit in a place where we need to improve, improve a system that was not even thought about? Because there was never any consideration that it was going to have to compete along the various means that it's having to compete now, in addition to doing what we're looking for the, for the 30,000 people who are coming here, which is what, 10% of what we already have here? How do we, how do we blend those two together? And that's what I was, I was excited when I heard, when I, when I heard, heard the, the conversation because it really was looking at, it felt to me like it was, it was thinking, having some time to think deeply and perhaps, uh, in new ways about how we're going to solve some of these. And this feels still very task focused on, 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 on issues that I don't believe we can solve with these things for either money, either money or the ability to get it done. So that was, that was what I was, this felt too task oriented on things which I don't believe are relevant today, given the problems that we have today from, from, from legacy, legacy developments.
So I had some thoughts on the.
Can I just jump out of sequence here, if you don't mind? Because I, I had similar take as Commissioner Vivins in terms of when I first read this and I had to work, as some colleagues had helped me work through some of this yesterday in, in our call. But I did think that our, the staff's presentation today was very concise and succinct in actually outlining the process that you've gone through. And what we have in front of us is a very high level, really it's just a very high level concept of, here's our approach. So I actually think that we're already talking about bullet point number, number one for sure, but also number three. And that's what we're getting into now, right? So do you agree that these, that, you know, with this approach? Now, there may be things that, that you believe that are missing here and I, 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 I agree with Commissioner Vivins. And I, my, and this goes to bullet three. I think the crux of this is, is that this isn't the answer. These are just the high level approaches. And do we think that there's something missing here? And there may be, you, you got some violent points and how do we begin to address some of this legacy issues that we're trapped with, like every other community, right? I mean, we're not unique in that way. Is that people made decisions 30, 40, 50 years ago that everybody has to live with and particularly in transit, right? And so, so I think the answer is making sure we have the right approach, which you're asking for here as we move into the implementation piece, that that's going to start to identify the high priority projects and initiatives to address. You know, we, we, we're not going to be able to do everything. So the, having a pride, that's one of my questions, which I'll, I'll, I'll stop now and let Mr. Lonnie jump in. But I, I, I do think that that's what piece that I struggled with is this is high level. We're going to get into the, the more detailed approach and implementation strategies. Do we, do we have the right overall tact here or are we missing a few components? So, you know, I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll save my more detailed comments for later.
So just jumping on, you know, what people have been talking about connectivity and tying the pieces together. I mean, one of the things that I also brought up in the, the parks section was, I think we really need a, a Parks Greenway Fund as a voluntary alternative, you know, we have, we have often have times when people, you know, propose, they say, okay, we're going to put a bike lane, but it goes nowhere. And it's not even really where the community wants a bike lane or they want a sidewalk. Where they really want the sidewalk is just down the street. And we see that all the time at Croze, there's really high priority places that they've, they want it, but there's never going to be a development there that's going to allow them to build that bike lane or sidewalk. But if we had a fund as a voluntary alternative, maybe, you know, we don't get a, you know, instead of, maybe this is not the place where we put a pocket park or a tiny dog park, but maybe they can contribute an equivalent amount of money to a fund.
He had enough tiny dog park contributions, you could make a real park.
You can make a real park, yes. And, or you can make a real, you can make a real greenway or real, you know, system. So, so that's one thought on that. I guess we're getting into the chapter focused topics. And so what, some of the things I just wanted to say too, I mean, I really appreciated the addition of the green streets action at 7-1. We, we have that in Croze. I think that that's a, a great feature of downtown Croze. I think it's a good model of a green street. I'm, I'm glad that biodiversity is being taken into consideration and, and road paving. But I think biodiversity could also be extended to other road management. You know, often roadsides are important refuges for rare plants. Because of the fire suppression, we used to have regular fires, you know, in our woodlands and others that would maintain these open spaces where you'd have rare plants. And now a lot of these have been confined to roadways. In the past year, my wife and I actually found an S1 or critically imperiled species in Alamo County on a county roadway. And we worked with the VDOT to actually put no mow signs on that area so they wouldn't be herbicide or, or mowed during the wrong season to protect that S1 species. It'd be nice if we were, as a county, more proactive and thinking about, you know, how we're maintaining biodiversity and on their roadways. In regards to the, the bullet point two about a program to support active recreation on some rural roads, obviously I support that. I do have some misgivings about through the plan that everywhere that walking and biking is, is referenced in the rural area, that it always is paired with recreation. We don't call out recreational vehicle travel, although, you know, obviously all the traffic on the Blue Ridge Parkway is recreational, except maybe emergency vehicles. On a given Saturday in my neighborhood, 90% of the, the traffic, the vehicular traffic is, 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 is recreational. People going to restaurants, to, to wineries, to take their kids to soccer practice, you know, all that is recreational technically. And, but we're not calling that out as recreational. And so I do, you know, there's this little section in here what says, biking and walking on rural roads does occur often for recreational exercise rather than access jobs or other resources, but these are valid uses of roadways and it feels apologetic. And, and I get it. And I'm glad that we're affirming those uses as valid uses of our road, roadways. But at the end of the day, if a, if a runner, a walker or cyclist is on a rural road, then, then that's the thing, right? You know, there's a user that's on the road and we should plan for that user being on the road. I fear a little bit that over emphasizing the recreational aspect kind of puts them in another class that sort of suggests that they're of lesser value. Whereas, you know, the, you know, the, when my kids are biking down the road to visit a friend's house or someone else is walking down the road to go fishing, that is an equally valid use of the road is equally valid as any car. And I wouldn't hate it to be sort of like siloed into recreation.
Can I just ask you a question? If I hear you, what you're saying is you, you want, you're suggesting that vehicular recreation and the bikers and the joggers be sort of more lumped together into one category or?
Yeah, I think rec, recognizing just on a, in this spirit of equity, that, you know, that, that it's not just, you know, that a lot of the, a lot of the, a lot of the activity in the rural area, particularly on weekends, is recreational. It's not just the, it's not just biking and running.
I, I get that, I guess for.
I do, I do think, I think if we are going to call out those uses as recreational, I think, you know, the, the point where it makes sense is when we talk down at the bottom about working with parks to identify areas specifically for a recreational plan, that makes sense as calling out because then you, there's a purpose for calling it out.
Yeah.
And so I think the question is, when we call something as recreation, why are we calling it? Are we calling out because we want to reach out to the user groups in question? I'd love to see a, an action item here about being proactively engaged groups for walking, running and cycling in the area on key decisions, you know, when we have key decisions being made. So I think that would be a reason to call that out. But I think at the end of the day, there are circumstances where, you know, when we make transportation decisions, we just recognize that whether it's someone on horseback or a farm vehicle or a runner or a walker or cyclist, there are people there and they're using the road and they should be considered in the decisions that are being made about the road.
Yeah, I, I agree. The only thing I would want to not lose is the fact that if you're driving in a car, it's different from a safety standpoint than if you're riding a bike or you're jogging or you're riding a horse. So when, when we're talking about, was it the safe streets, you know, or vision zero, those kinds of things? Making sure that those are separate and that there is signage and shoulders and the things that are necessary to protect the people who are vulnerable on the bikes.
I think a, one thing that would be a positive thing to either leverage, I know that there are existing groups that discuss, you know, there's the bike ped group that, I mean, it's, I don't know if, Kevin, you participate in that group already?
Which one?
There's the. There's the Bike Ped group that, that meets regularly.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the one that's run out of the P E C, I think. Yeah.
So I think, I think actively participating in those groups actively. But I think even if there was a county advisor group, I know sometimes people get sick of advisor groups, but having groups that actually represent non vehicular traffic, that might be a good way to make sure that we have good representation when key decisions are made. I think also an action item would be, be good is when there are rezonings or special use permits, other things, particularly in the rural area, but not exclusively. It would be nice in our staff reports if there was some analysis, you know, of while, you know, this is an area, area that's highly used by cyclists or runners or even horseback riders. You know, let's take that in consideration when this special use permit comes through. You know, right now, we never get any, you know, there would be vehicle counts, but there's never any discussion of roads are used, used by, by those other groups. So I mean, I think explicitly, you know, putting that as an action item that we would do that, I think would be a, a really big game changer. And particularly when it comes to things like road paving. The, the other thing I'll say in here too, I think one thing of the, the rural area, I think would be really helpful. We have a certain number of multi-use parking lots that are extremely helpful. There's, there's one over, a lot of them are privately owned. But so there's one over in, in Whitehall that's used frequently by runners and cyclists. But it's also used by the utility companies. You know, when, whenever someone needs to come in to fix the electric lines or, or whatever, those, those are same lots are highly used by that. There's one over in Dick Woods. There's, there's one. But there's a bunch of them around the county. It'd be nice for us to be a little bit more intentional about those multi, multi-use lots. And if we do have a commuter type program, I think that those would be great things to leverage where people could, you know, do ride share or things from the rural area.
I would, I would just remind you when we tried to do the, the, um, the ride share off of near Patterson Mill, the number of letters that we got from people saying, don't put that over there was quite astounding to me because that's really an isolated place. I mean, you'd be hard pressed to see that parking lot off of Patterson, on Patterson Mill near where the VDOT lane is. And so I think what you're also suggesting there is that, is that the, if you do bring in sort of community members and community groups, that part of their responsibility is to be an advocate for, for these particular things. Not to just sort of complain, which is often what some of those, those groups do. But that if they're going to be part of the conversation, they need to be part of the solution as opposed to just being part of the, the, the naysaying.
Well, I mean, I think that's a valid point. I think, you know, right now, I just, I think there's these great places that we have. Like Miller School has offered this great lot over in Dick Woods Road that's, that's highly used. There's, you know, as I say, just, I think if we are more proactive as a county and recognizing the importance of these, these places where people parked and meet. I, I think that that would be a, a, a big asset to the rural area.
You know, Mr. Murray, I listened to you talking about a wide range of things. But obviously we've, there's been multiple times over the past year, I've, I've heard you talk about some of the rural streets that, that in your area where, you know, a little bit of improvement would, would make a huge difference for the recreational component. I think we tried to say in the presentation here, I think that's something we heard from the board at one point is that recognizing that we are in a sort of constrained funding environment, we can't do everything in the rural areas, what do we want to try and get done? And I, and, and so it was a long list of things that you, you provided to us, everything from plant protection to all kinds of other stuff. And I think what we're trying to do with the comp plan is if, to use Mr. Vivens' term, you know, to do list, is to try and take this chapter and say, man, you could spend money all day on everything.
Yeah.
But where do we want to spend our money? Where, where are we going to call out as some, as some key places to put some focus on there? In part because if we don't have focus, especially in the development area, I, I fear that our efforts will be dispersed. And at the end of the day, it won't be as transformative as we need to be to address some of the things that Mr. Vivens had said. So coming back to the rural area, we were really trying in, in this regard to, you know, recognize that some places are heavily used for recreational purposes. And maybe that is one place where we would put our efforts.
Yeah.
And, 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 and not so much, I used to live in Esmond. You, you couldn't walk on the street. People were flying up and down the street. We put signs up, you know, slow kids playing, people ripping the signs down.
Yeah.
But I, we're not asking to put a sidewalk in Esmond as much as it might be a great idea. It's too few people and we don't have the money to, to pay a thousand dollars millennial foot for a sidewalk in Esmond. So it's, it's that kind of try and balance that we're trying to push a little bit here in the comp plan on this chapter specifically.
I think if I could, can you, just so this little baby, I think, allow this continued conversation, but also kind of direct us onto the, the first bullet. There was a slide, I think, Kevin, that you had that talked about the differences between the rural areas and the development areas. It was almost like a side by side. There you go. Well, yeah, I was thinking, so these are the challenges that are outlined. Was there one that talked about the implement?
There was, you just passed it.
Just passed it.
This one?
Yeah, there you go. Maybe that's it. Just thinking about ways, so what I think, Michael, what you're saying is sort of identifying the what? Like what are the things that want to be in here? And then is maybe the multimodal, to your point, when we get to the multimodal plan, that may be the how. But at some point in there, we're going to have to add some priorities, right? And some recommendations in terms of that. So maybe if it's helpful, maybe to sort of think about the what in the rural area, which I think is what you're asking. And then the what in the development areas, we can kind of parse those out and then go on to your next bullet. Does that make sense?
That does. I think, and we were trying to say by guardrails, it's kind of like, what places do we want to be focusing towards?
Yeah. So, so I just want to go back to that real quick. And you did have a, a slide in there where you talked about, you know, increasing road margins. I mean, that's, you know, they're only about, I'd say, a dozen, you know, really highly used areas for, for walking, running and cycling. And, and so it's, and most of these are already, they're used because they are predominantly safe routes. With the exception of, you know, Route seventy six, which is just insanely dangerous. So, you know, really a lot of times it's just little tiny sections. If you could add six inches, twelve inches to the margin of the road, you can make a place dramatically safer. If you could work with a cooperating landowner nearby who owns some property, say like, just make a little trail just off the road to get someone off the road so they can meet the next connection. And we, we had a great meeting recently about Ridge Road and some of the things that could have been, that could be done potentially to make that safer. The connection between Ridge and, and Decca, for example. But so, so that's what we're talking about, like little tweaks. I, I definitely would not expect or want, you know, sidewalks and bike lanes in the rural area unless, you know, except for, you know, when we get a regional transportation network, like the Three Knob Trail, that, that makes a lot of sense, obviously. I think it may make sense, the connection between, you know, you have Germans Gap is a widely used greenway that connects up to the Parkway. Having, you know, bike lanes that go from the Crozay development area to, to Germans Gap, that might make sense because it's so close to a development area and so highly used. But, but otherwise, you know, I think that we're talking about small tweaks here, but most importantly, do no harm, right? So many times I've seen, over in Keene, there were some areas that were widely, still are widely useful walking and running. And when one of those roads was before the board to be paved, one of the, one person came by, you know, came up and speak, to speak and said, oh, well, we need to pave this road to make it safer for, you know, I see bikes all the time on this road. We need to pave this to make it safer for them. And no one questioned that. And, and, and if you look at that map, I think two of those accidents that were described there where someone had a serious injury, it looks like they might've actually been in that Keene area. And so I think, you know, do no harm, I think is an important part of this, recognizing these uses exist and not taking actions that would bring harm, would eliminate those uses or, you know, impair the what's going on now.
Well, we've had such a nice rural area transportation conversation. I was just going to bring it back to development areas whenever we. Yeah, the only, I'll just add one other thing, rural areas, if anybody else has anything, just thinking about sort of goals as you, as you think about the multimodal transportation plan and the sort of how, I guess, in a sense. Felt to me like the goals should be something like we've talked around, most of these safety. And part of safety on rural roads is awareness. So thinking about signage and, and those, those types, like, you know, if I'm biking on a rural road and I'm supposed to stay eighteen inches from the edge, it's hard to do that. A lot of people don't do that. But if the bikers are aware of what's going on and the people on the road are aware, it's helpful. So we talked a little bit about connectivity, so that bigger picture of how you connect back into the development areas and having the possibility of identifying ways to do that. Sustainability, talked about that. Economic vitality, supporting access to jobs, housing and commerce with sort of in, on the internal, again, getting back to connectivity. And then maximizing the use of existing infrastructure and thinking about how that is best handled. Ways to, to avoid having to look for additional funding, but ways to maximize the use of existing infrastructure. And to me, part of that is getting back to your Strava comments from the past of identifying, having a map and understanding where those use patterns are. And as you mentioned, you know, you talked about prioritizing, like that should be a guide to how we prioritize things that we do in the rural areas. And then the last thing is, which I always, just thinking about benchmarks, what are other communities doing in this kind of setting and this kind of, under the subject? You know, you mentioned, I think, or someone mentioned having user groups come in. Maybe it's not another citizen, you know, advisory committee, but it's somebody who's made up of the users that can provide you some insight. I tried to just do that as a little summary of what's been talked about, I think.
The one thing I left out though, just real quickly, you know, you also have communities like Batesville where, you know, they have pedestrian needs as well. And when I lived in Batesville, you know, when there was a big snowstorm or there was some, you know, weather situation or something going on, the ability to walk to the Batesville store was really important. You know, and now I know they've had a need for this crosswind, which keeps getting obliterated by VDOT every day. But it's sort of an example of, you know, that connectivity to, you know, to this, what we call the Crossroads Community, right? That, that is actually a very important thing for the people in Batesville.
Yeah, I mean, that and also even just in like North Garden or wherever you are, where there are acts, where there's access to physicians, you know, emergency services, things like that. Yeah, makes a lot of sense. All right. Any other thoughts on the rural area chapter?
I do have a couple. Just doubling back on the signage, I jotted that down. That's something that should rise to an action. Share the road, any of those kinds of signs, start to communicate with our drivers. But I wanted to point our attention to, I guess it's R A Transportation One and then it's Objective one point three. Discourage new roads or road paving that would fragment core habitats, impair roads used by pedestrians. Yada, yada, yada. The last sentence, new roads should be for agricultural and forestry purposes. I'm not sure if I agree with that. If we're trying to look twenty years out, that really stood out to me. I think we all had a conversation, it wasn't that long ago, where we were talking about, you know, the twenty acre allotments for, for development. And I could see twenty years from now, there's a development of eight homes on two acres each, for example, or a little community of tiny homes that's gentle on the landscape that might require roads. And I, I want to be careful how we paint this picture of development in the rural area. Cause the way it's written here is like, absolutely, it's, it's a big X, like no more homes out there. And I don't know if that's what we're really trying to say twenty years out.
So I might be able to clarify it a little bit. So, and I can give a really practical example. If you look at Fox Mountain, which is, is actually, you know, it's identified in the biodiversity action plan as an area, as a large core. There's a road that's on, that was on the paving list on Fox Mountain Road. There's this gravel road that goes over Fox Mountain that already from the moment it got listed on the, the paving list, for sale signs started going up. You know, and for sale signs for not what would be affordable homes, but for people who want to put a big house in the mountains so they can have big scenic views. Now, there's sort of a natural progression that happens in a rural area where first, you know, you have a farmer that goes in, then becomes a gravel road. And then it becomes paved. The moment it becomes paved, you see subdivisions sprout up all along that road. And there's nowhere clearer than this than if you look at the two Dick Woods, right? There's Dick Woods that go, where it comes from Ivy to Miller School Road. And that, there's a lot of subdivision and residential development. If you look at the gravel part of Dick Woods that starts at Miller School and then goes to Nelson County, that's mainly farms. And so what happens is that when you take these, these gravel roads and you pave them, you're accelerating development. It's, it's a de facto.
Why the county has a policy to not pave the rural roads?
Yeah, and there was, there's a little bit.
It's its policy and it's expressed again in the document.
It does, and there's some ownership about this too.
They did let somebody who was just very wealthy just pave the road themselves.
Right, which it was, which we know.
Weird.
Yeah, in fact, I think that piece of property has been sold for an enormous amount of money. But yes, it was weird and those people there got fiber on the road where those of us who live closer can't get fiber because we're not going to pay for it. But the, the two pieces of property that you, that you talk about on Dick Woods Road, I mean, there was a decision there to allow those two properties to subdivide with really big lots. And so it's not the paving of the road that went from sixty four to, to Dick Woods, to, to the middle center there. It's really what happened, it's really sort of the conversation about the development of those two pieces of property and the people who were asking to develop them. And so, you know, I don't know necessarily that it's a chicken and an egg thing as far as the paving or it's who owns the hen house. And the, and the particular individuals of who owned the hen house in that, at that time. Were why, why we have those two, those two large and significant contributions to the property tax rolls in Albemarle County.
Well, I mean, I think we can have a reasonable conversation about, you know, places where there can be different kinds of development in the rural area. I think there, there's a great conversation that we've had, you know, we could get, you know, how we can have more small lots as opposed to these large farm estates. I think, you know, I agree one hundred percent on that. We need to have that conversation. But I think that's different from the areas that we know are right now, large forests that are right now unfragmented. Because when you have an area that's unfragmented, it has less, there's less introduction of invasive species. There's, you know, wildlife aren't, aren't being constantly run over like cars. So, you know, you, you have much more biodiversity in those areas. You know, and you have places that are, you know, safer for, for other recreational uses. So there may be places in the rural area that already have a lot of roads, that already have a lot of infrastructure where improving, making strategic improvements in those areas for the residential uses that are there or for other uses makes a lot more sense.
And maybe that's what the language has to be, just the way it's written right now, I don't agree with it, right? Cause it makes it sound like no, flat out no. And I respect everybody's perspective here and thank you for that. It's very enlightening. So maybe it's just the way it's worded, like maybe it's strategic, right? Where we develop more homes or whatever. And you have to be careful with that wording as well because that's not the intention of rural area. But I can't sit here and say twenty years out, I don't want any new homes in the rural area. That, that doesn't even seem realistic, right? So maybe it's just the wording there and how it is. Does that make sense?
I mean, maybe if we just scratched that new roads should be for agricultural and forestry purposes. I don't know that that is necessary in there.
Yeah, that, that's more palatable to me.
I mean, I think the sentence, I think it's fine without that.
Were they trying to refer to, was that new roads referring to like, like a road that goes to a forest, to a logging site? Or is it talking about a real road, like a public road?
I read it as a real road, but I don't know.
Yeah, because I read that, it struck me as weird too.
I feel like the others would be temporary roads, right? Maybe?
Yeah.
But you could rewrite this to say something like discourage new roads or road paving that would fragment core habitats, impair roads used by, or pair roads used by pedestrians, period. And then you could say, when paving is deemed necessary, prioritize spot improvements, period.
Yeah.
Take out the rest, because I think those, the rest of them don't feel like they fit to your point. Forestry, you have the ag. Forestry, you have the ag forest and the residential.
Well, I think the, or encourage additional residential development. I think, I, I think that that's valuable. Maybe it's just take some rephrasing. There is actually in the Rural Rustic Roads Program, there is actually a line that says that, um. In there, in the authorization that they, they say, whereas this, this won't, and you know. We know of no development that's going to occur. You might know the exact line, but it, it basically says. That there's not going to, it's not going to cause additional development on the road or that there's no anticipated development on that road. And really it's talking about, um, encourage additional residential development in agricultural areas or additional residential development and, you know. Unfragmented forests. That's really what we're talking about. It's not just stopping development altogether.
We're talking about maintaining the rural character.
Maintaining the rural character, yes.
So then we have to agree that paving roads does encourage additional residential development. And I'm not sure a hundred percent if it does. I mean, it seems logical, but I'm not sure if we all agree that it does.
But I can, I can only.
Controls.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Development pretty well, actually.
Zoning is what really controls it. So I don't, personally, I don't care if it's in here or not, but I, to me, it doesn't feel like it needs to be.
The last sentence is, is, the last sentence seems to be the most problematic.
Yeah.
Like reading along and then.
So we're, we're happy to strike that sentence.
That's that one clarifying question, which was three point six, where it says investigate educational programming intended to improve road user safety, yada, yada, yada. What does that mean? Is that, is that just a Google search or what does investigate mean in this context?
Um, what we're looking at possibly working with like our, uh, Almarckine Police Department on educational opportunities, even if it's for like new drivers. But, um, the, the idea there is that what. And it's frustrating to me that I see this all the time, but in our rural areas in particular, uh, road fatalities are often the result of. Unbuckled drivers. And, and so that, that's really what's getting at that is like using, uh, resources that are out there and available. Uh, to try and teach especially young drivers, um, how to be safer, make better decisions behind the wheel.
Perhaps we could remove investigate, implement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I don't want to pick it apart. It was just those kinds of verbs kind of leaving to say, huh, what does that mean? So.
I mean, I wrote that as a general comment to go through this whole thing. And there's a bunch of things that say explore, investigate. They're not, they're so vague. I really, just like they beat this drum every time, but there's a number of the objectives that are so vague. I don't know what they're saying. You wouldn't be able to tell if you did it.
Yeah, well, that's, is that where the multimodal?
Check the Google search history. So you did it. I'm sorry.
Sorry. No, I was just asking if that additional detail is what we get to next, Karen. I don't know if. Yeah, go for it.
Were you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to add, uh, to Aaron's point that I did find a lot of the language that suggests that there is a. A, a very generalized approach at a particular item that we're going to explore. But are you actually going to implement something or are you going to, uh, facilitate something? So I, I think maybe take a look at that terminology that's not so, because you can explore many things and not come up with anything tangible. So if it's, if it's an important piece, we're good, you know, th- there should be an actionable.
Yeah.
Uh, or measurable outcome.
Uh, that, that's all great points and we'll, I think, take another look at, read through these action steps especially, uh, but through the chapter overall and. And make sure that we're not a lot more directive with our language.
Yeah, maybe one thing to say to that is, you know, you could say, um. Whatever the word is, blah, 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 with a goal of blank. And then you're actually identifying the action as a possible outcome.
So. But I've got a couple, I mean, a lot of been, been covered what I was, um, had marked up here, but going back to, and this is in, in page sixteen under. Uh, how the multimodal transportation plan would be implemented. And, and the first bullet there is, um. Prioritizing. The infrastructure investments. And, and so I, I think that that's key, because that is, that is obviously the outcomes that we want to. To, um, have come out of the, out of, out of the multimodal plan is. What are the actionable first steps, right? What are the highest priority things that, because we know, you, you have been mentioned here today. We don't have the resources to do everything that we need. We can probably all come up with a dozen things that we feel are high priority. Right? And so twelve times, however many people we have up here, it's a lot. We know that we're going to have to pare that down significantly. And so what are they? And I think what I would also suggest is. Evaluate the process that we go through to fund. And I know we have a, it's a noiseless state process and. But let's think about that. How do we approach it? How, how can we increase the possibility of actually getting the funds, right? And so I would. Whether it's a formal process, but at least an evaluation of. Should we just keep doing the same things over and over again? Or are there some things that we might be able to think about? Maybe it's somewhat outside the box, maybe it's P three partnerships and maybe pursue things that we haven't to, to increase. The likelihood of actually being successful in getting some of these really high priority projects that we know we have, right, throughout the county. Um, so.
Can I tag onto that? I was going to ask this at the end of the session, but since you brought it up, I mean. Do we really think that there's, we're going to be getting money from the federal government for, to the state for transportation projects, given the current administration? I mean, the Federal Highway Administration, they're canceling all the federal grants, so they're not going to be giving new ones. That's my. Observation. What is your experience?
My experience is that things change over time. Different administrations come in and things change.
I think nothing will change for the next four years. And this is like, aren't we updating this every five? I feel like we need, it's like the elephant in the room when I'm reading this. That is not, what are we going to do as a county? And maybe when you get to your work plans, it's like things that you have to compete for funding with, when there's no funds coming from the federal government. They're just ending grant programs. At every agency, including the Federal Highway Administration.
For anything that people need to, needed the most.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, obviously, um. Now, we've been working on this plan for several years. This chapter is a, is a reflection of stuff we did.
It'd take more, four more years and then.
I understand. I understand the frustration. I share it too. Um. I think the Luis's point is, he's talking about how do we as a community try and put ourselves in the best position to take advantage of certain funding programs, right? And our priorities should match up with that. I think there's a little statement in, in one of the sessions talking about like using smart scale. Grants, really try to go deal with some of the vehicular solutions that we have, because the, the current administration has made that a high priority of that program. If we go back several years previously, other administrations had made maybe some more of the multimodal. Stuff a little bit more, uh, eligible for funding. So they've made changes there. And of course, the federal government, I mean, the elephant in the room here is the, is the changing of, uh, funding priorities we're seeing at, at the national level. Uh, who knows what will be next year. I think for a community of ourselves, it kind of comes back to some of the things that, that Mr. Bivins was talking about, how, you know. As it come cost clear, well, what you want to try and achieve. And I think what we're trying to say, and hopefully. I, and I'd be interested in sort of maybe hear why we failed to be clear enough about that, but it is. We're going to have another thirty thousand people in twenty years. We've got the road system that we have. We're not going to be able to significantly increase that road system. How do we start to try and find other ways to accommodate? The new people we want to welcome into our community and the resulting congestion that's going to come from that if we don't develop these other ways. So I think that to back to the funding aspect of it. Embedded in here also is a recognition of either. Um, we're picking up this low plan, no plan, I mean, on a small level, low plan, no plan from Tunico County, where they control their own streets and they do a lot of these things. It's like, they found it cheaper to sometimes go and just put the improvement out there. As opposed to having a big engineering exercise before they did it. And use this cost savings and the engineering thing to fix whatever mistakes they made when they went to try and fix the problem. In other words, it's almost easier just to do it for small crosswalks.
Yeah.
Sidewalk, patches, um, things like that. That's one way, I think we're trying to be a little bit innovative. Another way is to recognize that for some of those places in that gap of wanting to build, um. More multimodal, especially bike facilities or transit facilities, that some of that may ultimately end up being something that we as a community have to fund ourselves. Or that we use our revenue sharing opportunities to build some of those things and or building up some capacity within the community. To sort of do these projects ourselves as opposed to relying on VDOT to do them. VDOT's cost of production is very high. So. Those kind of things are in the plan and, and if they're not coming across strongly enough, maybe that's an indication that we need to make.
Yeah, and, and so I, I think they're not, uh, and I wasn't suggesting, I wasn't trying to, even the way I worded, I wasn't trying to say like, do this or.
No, no, no.
That, but I do think we need to, we need to go beyond our. Let's wait and see what we get from VDOT and smart scale, because even, even if you go back a year, I mean, last years or before this administration and federal government in the cuts, what did we get? I mean, our higher priorities, none of it, none, none, none of them got approved, right? I mean, a lot of it was put on this fifth street. Didn't happen. Um, I think there's a lot of, uh, personally, how would. VDOT needs to reevaluate the way they, um, start to plan projects.
Yeah.
And when they actually start to cost estimate.
Yeah.
Projects, because I, I, I think they got it backwards. They, they're, it, it, it's fraught with potential error and price escalations. By the time they actually got to do it, and then you wind up putting all this time and effort to something that doesn't happen. And we see it over and over again. That's what I'm saying. I think we need to be more creative as a community and say, well, how are we going to get these high priority projects? If we can get some VDOT money, great. If we can get some federal money, great. But if they're really high priorities, how do we get them done?
Yeah, well, another, you know, another good example of that is, is you said P, P threes, right? Public private, we're, just think about how developer engagement can help get things done and help process that.
I was thinking just.
One of the things, just, you know, one of the things in like personal experiences, you get. These multimodal paths sometimes are a huge amenity. It's like what the people want, you know, it's what they want to live in that community. And there's value that's placed on that. And so as a development community considers that being implemented, you know, there are other communities that actually have that multimodal. As part of their checklist, their site plan checklist. And if those kinds of things that are actionable. That actually are, create accountability as you're applying for a site plan can be included in the documents. I think that's very helpful. Aspect of it. And then just one other thing, a hypothetical project where, you know, there was a smart scale. Improvement that was funded, but there was a gap. The developer stepped up to fill that gap. And the county can call on those funds at their whim, whatever they wish, to actually complete that smart scale project that was, you know. There, where there was that gap, just another method of, kind of like a mini partnership. But Karen, I'm sorry, I entered.
No, I, I got excited. You were talking, it's my fault. Um. Yeah, so I was also just thinking for some of the smaller, smaller level, I don't say scale, smaller level things in here like you had, um, trying to, to have, um. Charging stations for electric vehicles. You know, that's an example of something where maybe we start thinking about incentives more. Like, um, putting out that if a developer. Profers or puts in charging stations, they get some kind of density bonus or some, some kind of, some benefit to them to do that. In Charlottesville, we, uh, when I was on the planning commission there, we added, um, a density bonus if they were within so many feet of a transit stop. So that we, you know, we're trying to encourage development around existing transit infrastructure. Um, there was a master plan for the trails and then we asked developers, try to tie into that trail. And they, we got it. People kept tying into the trail, but only because there was a master plan.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking about, like, we've been talking about bike lanes along roads and, you know, how to squish all these different users. But, you know, we need to be out of the box a little bit more, like maybe there is, I don't know what the route is, but some regional bike commuter route that's not on the road. That's, you know, through, whether we, we just purchased a ton of land for future military related installations to support NGIC, right? We have a lot of money to do things when we want to. So, you know, if you look at, if you look at Lynchburg, they, they're lucky because they have a lot of parkland, but. They have bike lanes that are bike routes that they put through the parks that turn into commuter routes. And they weren't even intending that. And now they're like bike commuting, all these. People are bike commuting to work. So I just think maybe we've just think out of the box. I like that idea that I heard earlier tonight from somewhere down that end about, um. You know, if, instead of like saying, we want this ten foot paved wide path in front of your property, but maybe it doesn't go anywhere. Like it runs into a, a mountain or a wall of rock or something, uh, or somebody else's building. We've had this conversation multiple times lately. They pay an in lieu of fund that then goes into that, that Greenway fund, but that, we have to do that plan. Maybe that. Is something separate or maybe it's part of that master transportation plan. And hopefully that transportation plan is thinking about off-road transportation as well. So, but I, I'm just thinking that, uh, we could, and maybe this is later on when you do the master plan, but there's a number of incentives that you could come up with. For some of these smaller scale things where you, we hope that the developer could do.
Yeah.
Yes. So in terms of like smaller scale things too, I mean, one example in Croze that I think is important is, you know, there's these big things, people talk about roundabouts and other things that we're working on. But I gotta tell you, um, one of the things that was bothering me for years was there's just a little spot on, you know, Miller School Road to Croze Ave, where, to Croze Avenue. Where people were turning right to go to the, the high schools, where people were off-roading because the left turn lane was backing up. And blocking all the traffic on Croze Avenue, like all the way back to Croze. And just taking that place where people are just off-roading their vehicles in the dirt and actually putting some pavement on it. That has improved the traffic there by good twenty minutes.
That's a good example of a low plan, no plan.
And so I think there are other places where it's just expanding the turn lane, just making the turn lane a little bit longer, you know, you could have a huge impact. And, and I wish we would do a little bit more on identifying those. There's things where we could, I think some, there's some of these turn lanes, you know, they're obvious to the public. If we just reached out to some of the people in the community and said, hey, listen. What are your list of things? And, and usually by the time VDOT gets around to these things, the turn lane needs to be even longer than they planned. They, they had like five feet to the turn lane. When they really should have added five feet to the turn lane ten years ago, and now it needs to be twenty feet.
Commissioner Moore, you were saying development area.
I was saying, I thought it was a, 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 a mile or two ago, um, the, um, and, and some of the conversation earlier reminded me of Dr. Brown, where we're going, we don't need roads, but, um. Um, but no, to the point that, um, uh, Commissioner Firehawk actually was saying, I, I, you lived in Madison, Wisconsin, we had. Beautiful, just like dedicated bike paths, um, that you could cross the whole city on. I actually used it as a bike commuter and, and. Um, I think about that coming from my own neighborhood now, trying to get to where I work, just, just west of, of UVA proper. And, um, you know, it's twelve minutes by car, but, and it's about five miles. Um, but if I were to go the only safe way, which uses that bike path along the parkway, it, it's eight and a half miles. Um, you know, and it adds a lot because there's just no good crossing at two fifty that I think is safe. But at least somewhere along the path to get to it is not safe. Um, the, but the, I think there's, there's a few things I want to just sort of like. Suggest as priorities. And I know this is probably a lot of it already will confirm what you're thinking, but just things that are on my mind is what Commissioner Bivins was saying earlier about, um. This is predominantly cars as far as how people get around and, and we can wish for more. Uh, uh, you know, bike use and stuff, but it's not easy. Um, like, you know, even where I live, like I just said, if I were to try and bike to work, it would be really a challenge. Um, and, and I think until we have that infrastructure to make that work, it's predominantly cars. To that end, um. You know, I, I don't want to just add more lanes to the existing highways. I think what we can look at though is, is sort of use the, uh, the, the, the stormwater floodplain metaphor, right? With like lots of rivulets and lots of smaller connections alongside and parallel. Um, uh, we just don't have that much land to do so. Um, and the developments that we've got, I, I, I don't know the creative answer to this, but so many of them are just really constrained and there's no way to get from. Here to there, even though it's a very short distance as the crow flies. Um, but if we had more of those kind of grid-ish, um, obviously now it's going to be kind of curvy, but. Grid-ish ways to go places that aren't twenty-nine, that aren't hydraulic, um, we might actually stand a chance of like pulling some of the traffic into neighborhoods and not just, not. Speeding traffic, but just cars, uh, in a way that absorbs some of that without having to go nuts with our highways. Second, sort of. Second, sort of a a priority I would see. Um, you know, after kind of like making it easier for cars to get around. Is is the public transportation is is really, really difficult in the 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 urban ring of the county. Unless you happen to live right next to a bus stop. But I mean, again, just my own example. Uh, twelve minutes for me to drive to work, it would take a minimum of an hour and nineteen minutes for me to take public transportation work. Um, and and that's effectively means I will never do it.
Too ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and so I think, you know, again, looking at at that uh, microtransit is a key part of that. Maybe different versions or hybrid versions of that, um, that and those are both within the development area of the county. Um, a- and and not even crossing north of the Ravanna either, so you know. Uh, that that I would, yeah, I would really, if it was twenty-four minutes instead twelve for me to drive, cool. But, you know, we gotta have a way to 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 address that for the people where they live. Um, and I don't know the answer there either, but that is something I hope we can, you know, put as the the second priority on under.
Yeah, I mean, they mentioned microtransit in here. Are you suggesting you just want it more like microtransit?
I I think it, uh, um, I think for the development pattern we have, which is not particularly dense. Um, fixed routes are gonna be really, really tough to pull off.
Yeah, no, I, there's a lot of great technology for on demand. The microtransit doesn't need to go up in that neighborhood, does no one's, no one's asking for it. Oh, three people asking for it, send the little shuttle up.
Yeah, exactly. And when we saw some of the the cost comparisons on a per rider basis for Microcat versus some of the actual fixed routes. It actually beat two or three of the fixed routes. I was surprised. Um, and then bike commuting again, I think it'd be great. Uh, we have uh, the Ravanna, which is an illiteral river. And then two fifty, which is like basically a river, uh, in terms of how much it blocks everybody, everybody's ability to cross safely north or south. Um, and until that's addressed, and a lot of that's in the city, I don't know how you, how we get there. Um, there are more crossings in the city kind of over Locust Grove toward downtown, but there's. There's far fewer kind of in the county portion that we can actually like do. Again, though, I'd love to see that. And and the reason I bring up those kind of points is that that just again, where we've put our people in the development area is mostly north of the city. And so kind of like going north and south, up and down from from in town to the suburbs is a lot of the trips. And then that sort of uh, alludes to the the last thing I'll say about all all that is just. There are a couple of mentions of the city and and I think one action I did that actually talked explicitly about coordinating with the city. Um, but I just the the need for city-county collaboration on this is is gonna be enormous. There's so much that just can't happen. And unless we're talking together about these things sort of all the time. Um, and I don't know if our priorities are the same as theirs, like. I feel like getting people to and from work efficiently and safely is pretty high priority. Uh, some of the things I read about in the news about the city. I don't know if they really want people to get places. Just period. Um, or or efficiently. Uh, you know, they're 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 talking about reducing lanes on a major corridor, which is clustered up with traffic often already. Um, they didn't bother to do the 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 sort of traffic like coordination study years ago. It's gonna be till next year before that's even online. So it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse to drive through at anything except very off-peak hours. Uh, and so. How we take where they are and where we are and align at least enough to have some kind of sensible. Coordination across the boundaries, I think will be really important going forward. Yeah, please.
So so I would add to that. Again, what I started with earlier, where we are is not where we are. Where we are is a ring around a destination point. And that that ring brings people from Orange, from Green, from Augusta, from um, uh. From Fluvana and from the other county in Nelson. And so to try and solve an Albemarle County problem by ourselves, I think doesn't. Do the, doesn't recognize the severity of the problem. But it's much larger than a hundred and forty thousand people. It's whatever the TJ PJ, there's someone here who knows that better than I do. It's whatever that region is. That cost to come through us to get to the major um, uh, health. Health and education and until we develop more up twenty-nine. Um, uh, the major employment area in this, uh, for 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 this region at this region level. And so figuring out how to, how to manage both our local traffic and our traffic that comes through us to go someplace. Is something that I, while it's not necessarily. Unfolded in 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 this, in this piece, I would suggest that there'd be some footnote or some some answer. That this is not a hundred, this is not a hundred and forty thousand person solution here that we're that we're thinking about. That's the piece that I was being concerned about. And I say that, you know, many of us have said what our other lives are, and when I say that and realize that. I tried to move us up to to Norfolk for a free building. And most of my people who were gonna go to that free building, who were not making six figures, were north of town. It was the six-figure employees who live over in that other gated community, not the one on the west, but the one on the east, who Scotch the deal. And that's typically how decisions get made around here. It's the people who live in the upper six-figure communities that Scotch the deals for the people who don't have six-figure, six figures. And we have a lot of people who come here who do not make six figures. Who do not make six figures. And so some of the solutions that that I see us doing are really geared toward towards a more affluent community. Which is fine. I will give you a situation. I had a conversation with a very passionate young man. Who was probably gonna go work for something called C three. I don't know what the C threes are. I do know what it is. It's an environmental sort of advocacy group, very passionate young man. Who lives off of Barracks Road and was telling me that he just wanted the sidewalks clean so he could ride his bike. So he rides bike, cause he couldn't ride his bike anywhere. And I said, I said, tell me, I mean, say, tell me more about this bike riding stuff, because you know, you've all heard my thing about. I see fewer bike shops, so I have a hard time believing that there's a lot of people who are commuting by bikes. I see a lot of um, trainee, what is that, thrown by the side of the road, those electric, those electric bikes that people can ride. I don't know what they're called, but you're just sort of turning around one. And he said to me, huh, scooters, thank you. He he said to me. Um, and I challenged him to tell me about a bike that was less than two thousand dollars, that I could actually. Not be afraid that it would break if I was gonna give it to somebody. And he told me something, this is very interesting thing he told me, he said, I agree. That most of the people driving bikes, riding bikes to where. Are the C's, the C-suite white males in this community. This is a white male who was telling me this, and so I'm just like being quiet. Cause this guy's telling me about the C-suite, white males that ride their bikes to to their offices. And therefore can afford to have that kind of lifestyle. And so my, where this, where this narrative, the Shaggy Dog story is coming through, is that as we're thinking about these things. As as I think about multimodal, and I think, is it really a commuter option? Is it really truly gonna be a commuter option? I'm trying to do in my head the functional analysis are. You've got twenty percent of the people according to page seven who work at home. You have sixty-six percent of the people who are single, single people, single the co-op agency. How are we going to somehow get the twenty percent and the sixty-six out of their house, out of their car, onto a multimodal world? And that's the piece, that's the piece that I've been wrestling. To try and say, you talk about priority, they say, which is why you hear me sort of caustically at times say, I don't wanna talk about multimodal. I wanna talk about how we're gonna move these people more efficiently. What are the options? The the, can we, we. We lost in court over an option that was wonderful for 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 north of town. Because whatever the paperwork was, and I'll look at the lawyer over here, we didn't, we didn't, we couldn't hold the particular development to the. To something that felt like it was good for everybody. And as a result, all of those people up there don't have a public means or a shared means without it being a private means to come into town. And if you look at their density, when I looked at the density on the density map, we've got more people north of, north of the Ravanna River than we have anywhere else. In the development area, even including Pantops and we and and getting the development area of Croze. How are we going to get those people options? How are we gonna provide options for those people so that they can go and do the things that I think, I think is the right thing. We're talking about the quality of life. Transportation is about the quality of life, and how do we improve that? So that people can go from home to chores, then go from home to recreation. They can enjoy all those scenic views that my colleague to the left of me wants to preserve out in the middle of God knows where, and so that they can go do that in ways. That is healthy and that is price sensitive to our community that we want. And that's, that's the kind of thing that I'm looking for here. To answer the questions that are before us, which is why I was sort of pushing so hard on, how do we retrofit this? How do we take this, these are great ideas, how do we take this and 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 connect those, those development areas? Which I think are are woefully underserved right now.
Well, you know.
I ask you a couple of quick. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, so speaking from the perspective of Croze, I think one of the big.
I'm not doing this area specific. Because we don't, I don't have the plan, I don't have the Pantops person here to to give the counterpiece, and I don't feel like doing the Jewett piece. I'm just, I'm asking staff, I'm putting before staff. He don't, don't even pretend, don't even pretend, don't even pretend, I know where you.
What I was gonna say is the elephant in the room, though, is that, you know, you know, I think about someone recently who who said. We don't have enough roads and transportation to accommodate all of us to commute to Charlottesville. And what I really wanted to say to that person was, well, really, we don't, we need to develop to the point of Croze where we're not. We have employment centers in Croze. So that's outside of this this chapter. But I think really thinking as we develop employment centers, trying to develop employment centers in some of those areas, so people don't have to commute. To to other parts. I think that that's a big piece here. I also would say too, I I think we need to re, I I wish I could go back in time and get people just rethink. The continually adding more and more lanes to twenty-nine. Um, that that was a horrible solution. I think we need to really rethink that whole philosophy. We've made. Twenty-nine a disaster.
If I could, um, to Commissioner Murray, I think you are making a really good point. That I just wanna make sure that everyone recognizes there and responding to Commissioner Bivens. Keep in mind that we don't see any one of these action steps is a silver bullet. Everything that you see here has to be looked at holistically, and we've got to pick and choose what the right solutions are. And they're not always in the transportation chapter. They're very often, it, I mean, a lot of what I'm hearing from. The members of the commission here are questions that are answered in the land use chapter. About how are we, how are in the housing chapter, in the economic development chapter, so. Uh, just keep that in mind that we, that when we get down to say implementation, we're gonna be looking at things that pull from all of those. Sections and really look at it. So where are we providing places for people to live so they don't have to commute from green? Or where are we giving people jobs in different areas that at the activity center idea is really focused on that? And the transportation chapter is supposed to be emphasizing the activity centers and how we build those up. So, uh, I I really appreciate that line of question. I just wanna highlight that.
Yeah, I'm glad you did. I I go ahead.
I was gonna say, well, it 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 facilitates, so the transportation temp facilitates the activity centers. Right? So so they they work off of each other, they they need each other, so it's it's not standalone by itself. And that's, I mean, we can. To me, it's just, these questions are about to get to the implementation piece and. I mean, I think we've gone through all of these. Getting to that implementation piece and then making sure that. We have the components in there to make it successful. I I think you have them there. I think you've heard a lot today. About some things that we need to perhaps pay a little bit more attention to, but I think you have, in my mind anyway. The foundation is there um, to have a successful implementation of the multimodal piece.
Yeah, and I'll kind of go off that too. I, and I don't mean to be summarizing this, but a couple of things jump out. One is, as we've been talking. It seems to me a reasonable process is with all the great work that you guys have done. We've talked about it sort of being the what. And then we talked about prioritizing things. Then we talked about the how. So we've got them prioritized. Now, how do we, how do we do this? And then we implement. And we understand how we do the implementation, then we sustain, and then we measure. And I think a key part of this is the measurement piece. So as we think about. As we're moving forward and as we look at the multimodal transportation plan, thinking about having ways to measure success in there as part of the process. For me would be an important aspect of it. The other piece of it, you mentioned sort of Kevin and and Lonnie were talking about land use. You know, for me, I mean, the transportation, it's like the sort of the elephant in the room. It's all about land use, really, when it comes down to it. That's what's driving this. Whether it's in Nelson County, or whether it's in Fluvana, or whether it's in the center of the development area in Almaro County, it's how are we using the land? And then, so that's tied to zoning, which I know we'll get to at a point. So that's all kind of interwoven. And that piece, I think, is where we start talking about things like, do we have too many, too much parking as a requirement? You know, how do we think about sharing parking? What are some of the strategies to do that? EVs, things like, um. Uh, you know, it's just all based on basically zoning strategies and what that looks like tied to the transportation plan. So for me, that's kind of a, sort of it in a nutshell, in a sense, I think. The approach to the rural area development and rural area and development challenges, I think having them. Separate is helpful to answer the first question. I think everybody's saying, yeah, that's.
Very different needs and solutions.
Exactly. Um, the investigation of a program to support active recreation, I think we probably all agree that that's makes a lot of sense. Um, and then the im- the implementation of a multimodal transportation plan, I think we agree that that is a good logical next step. My question is, when would that happen? Just ballpark, so we would probably get. I think we would get through October and get this AC forty-four approved, right?
Well, well, go ahead.
Well, we've talked about rural area plans, we've talked about, you know, there's a lot of plans we're talking about. I'm just curious, is this. Is there a strategy even within those to prioritize them? And and how is that being discovered or determined?
Yes. To your first point, thank you for coming back and like. Remember the challenge that we tried to tell you at the beginning of this process, we were gonna sort this stuff out into chapters. And then we're gonna have some reference to each other, but that it needed to be some focus within topic areas, cause otherwise. You start, you know, combining all these things and so that's, it's been an interesting process. Try and like write a chapter just on transportation, touch on a couple of little things of environmental and. Protecting agricultural and forestry roads, whatever it is, you know. So it's been an interesting challenge. I think one thing that um, Tanya and her team are really focused on right now and that we're all committed to is the implementation component of the. It's very easy to um. Write a plan and come back five years and, oh, write it again. So I think we are really trying to focus on implementation and a set of metrics to see whether we're getting to the, we're we're doing that. And um. I'm not quite ready to let the cat out of the bag yet on exactly what we're trying to do, but I'll sort of give a preview a little bit, and that is. I think our proposal is gonna be really to try and. Think about how we come back and talk about these activity centers. And what are we supposed to be doing? Cause that's a, that's a huge portion of this. We we made a decision someplace along the line that. This thirty thousand people we're gonna try and accommodate, we're gonna try and get a majority of them probably in the. Activity centers. And we may tweak some of the zoning around in the, the lower density areas to allow more missing metal. But I mean, the lion's share of the population is trying to get into those things. And at the same time, overlap that with uh, this idea of really probably very strong. Um, cause when we have a little more control of is the the bike and the ped. Aspect, the regional transit transit thing is sort of in its own world, it's very important, but you're talking from staff level. Of us really trying to work on taking this multimodal plan and actually putting something down that's feasible. On the, you know, on a map and and saying, this is the system of bike trails. Pedestrian, especially connecting activity centers, connecting things into the city. And looking for pedestrian gaps, if you will, in the systems within the activity centers. And really trying to create kind of a a long list of things that we need to be working on. I don't know how we're gonna fund them, to your point. But, you know, sort of touching upon some of that aspect of, we are gonna have to look for other ways, either doing the projects ourselves or funding the projects ourselves. And trying to find ways to maybe work with VDOT and catch his opportunities for the federal grants are getting ready to come in. To be ready, and yes, and that's the last part of this thing, is having a good plan. That when we're talking to our partners in the development community, if we build a large percentage of the public infrastructure in our community. Is to make sure that they are building key elements of this of this plan. I think. Maybe if we had had this ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, a stronger. Multimodal plan in place, we may have made some more progress than we have had done, but that's not, that means not too late. So in long and short of that thing is, I think we're gonna try and bring something to you in the June timeframe. And it will be in the document that really starts to talk about, hey, look, these are the kind of the key things that we think we need to be doing. Coming out of this planning exercise so that hopefully in five more years, we have these short little chapters that you can like come back and sort of tweak the policy aspects of them and the actions below and take some focus on it and have some, an implementation plan and update that. If we're missing something on a metric, maybe double down on another aspect or an action plan to make sure we're advancing something. It's kind of, it's embedded in this whole strategy of this document.
Yeah, to be able to answer, how are we doing?
How are we doing and having a way to get to, you know, to help us course correct? But at least have also an implementation strategy in the in the comp plan.
The last thought I had, just sort of a random thought, but I don't want to miss the opportunity to say it. And that is with affordable housing, transportation is key to affordable housing, right?
It is now reflected in this chapter.
Yes, it is.
We asked for, so I was happy to see.
I I think I would just say, as we think about the way we use county funds and whether it's raising taxes or whether it's parsing portion of, you know, the funds that maybe are surplus at a time that could go to affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. Keeping in mind that we're not just, we don't just need to fund housing, but we need to fund infrastructure to make housing successful. And that's where I think a lot of times we're like, oh, we got the, we got the people heads in beds, that's great. But they can't get to their house without buying a car.
And that's where the regional transportation, because right now K-Tech has the Trump car, not K-Tech. Cat has the Trump car. If Cat, you can, you can say to Cat, how much will it cost? And they say, well, it's gonna cost X amount of dollars, it's often over a hundred thousand dollars to put a stop in.
Oh, yeah.
And if you say, sure, they still have the ability to say, no, we don't want to put that stop in. And so because I've had that, part of, part of me, I've had that conversation. Part of the person I work with has had that conversation about including a stop and was told it was X amount of money. And then, so where's the county gonna get the money to do it with? And so you're right. The whole idea is, if we're going to ask people to live someplace, I think we also have to think more broadly about how are we gonna move those people around? And I don't think that's just about affordable housing. I think that is about, how do we move people around? Because if we can get them out of cars, we can create a healthier lifestyle. And that healthier life, that healthier lifestyle is something that's that's better for this entire community. And that, that that says, that that's really is, you, what you're asking about is the CIP, you also have a piece in it.
Yeah.
That talks about how do we extend.
That's right.
Public transit or tran or public transit options to other parts of the county. And that's the piece that I, because we don't, we don't own the transportation system yet. Maybe the regional transit project will make it more of a shared ownership, which I think would be a brilliant situation if we could get to that thing. But right now, one entity still has the way to say, we're not gonna do that, thank you very much.
But when we had a, to your point, we had a proposal not so long ago for a trailer park that would have been presumably affordable housing. But the commute from that trailer park would have been the same commute as if someone were to drive from Fluvana. So is is that really helpful?
I I have to come in on that because, you know, that 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 really is a piece that really just is, is, and I'm not saying you are, but attempts to put people in a box that I don't think is fair for us to do. Because if you look at that part of the county, if you look off a secretary road on the other side of twenty, you will see houses that are very modest, a little bit smaller, a little bit bigger than than this, than this, than this manufactured home place. And people can make decisions about the size of house that they are willing or capable of purchasing without having to be condemned for whether or not they have to drive in. I saw, I listened to some of that and thought, who are you to say whether or not a person has to drive in or not? Not you, but some of the comments about that. People make all kinds of decisions on how they allocate their funds. And if they want to give their child or give their family the opportunity to live in a modest house in the country and still commute to wherever their job takes them, God bless them, let them do that. But I don't think it's, it is, it is not my role to say that you, that your economic, your economic balance sheet is such that I'm going to make a decision about whether or not you should be able to drive in.
I think I agree, I think we're generalizing, I think, though.
I just want to not generalize on that part.
Yeah, I I think that there, maybe, I don't know my, I don't know the specific facts, but I think in general, again, generalizing, affordable housing benefits from transportation, from public transportation.
And I will just simply say, the problem here is not about transportation. The problem here is that when you talk about affordable housing, that it's still a house that is going to bump up against five hundred thousand dollars. In this community.
I see what you're saying. That's, yeah.
And so I want, I want to make real clear that we're not talking about something that used to be called section eight housing. And I want to be real clear that when we talk about affordable housing in this community, we're talking about people who probably as a general household are making somewhere about a hundred thousand a year with two incomes.
And we can split hairs, because we can talk about deeply affordable and thirty percent AMI.
So my piece is, let's be careful in the, in the language that we use. Because that language has a tendency to be, to paint broadly a group of people who have been disenfranchised in this community. And that is not what this group should be doing.
Right. Which I don't think on, I don't think is in a disagree, I don't think anything we've said here disagrees with that. I think it's still the fact, yeah. All right, does anybody, not to close things out, but does anybody have any closing comments or thoughts?
Couple of other questions, just for clarity. It was around section five, DA section five, strengthen regional inner city transportation. If you could just really quickly walk me through five, two, five, three, five, four. I'm not clear what they meant. So they provide support for Charlottesville Amtrak pasture train rail to meet future demand. Is that a renovation to expand the existing facility? Just walk me through those three bullets and what the intention is, just for my knowledge.
Yeah, there is, that that five, two, that that is one of the ideas. And you may remember that a number of years ago, there was a regional effort to try and work to improve that station to be able to run more rail, rail transit through there. So that that is something that regionally the, we've looked at.
Okay, so is that expanding the existing facility, the the building or?
Trying to get a pull over lane for the train.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a little bit of all of that, I don't remember all the specifics of it, but it wasn't.
Yeah, the ruined wings.
At one point, that was one big station. The halt that where the wing place.
Stations in the baggage section that used to be for storage.
Right, so it's just reclaiming the entire building.
Okay.
Which would be helpful. And we are supposed to be getting an additional, we're getting two additional trains or one additional train?
Yeah, that there is a state rail plan, I can't remember the exact number, but there is.
You could have three options to get to Washington if you need.
Increase service.
That that line is the the profitable line of Amtrak.
That's exactly right.
Extremely successful.
Back really?
Yeah.
End it from here, DC and back?
Yeah, and and also you can, you can go south, too.
Yeah, I just took it to Ronup not long ago.
I love riding that train.
And and that's really what the the five, three is, is the supporting those efforts by DRPT to continue to in increase the opportunities for rail transit, both north, south and east, west.
Okay, and if we're.
It'd be lovely to take a train to Richmond.
Yeah.
And and I guess, you know, it's sort of like, there's been talk about that, there's been studies about the east, west line. We're just trying to get a little bit out in front of that, hoping that one day that that becomes more and more a a realistic thing. And by gosh, we've got a, something in our plan that supports that.
You have to fill a plan, right, that says, yes, this was one of our goals, where, right here.
I see, that that's super helpful. And then five point four, just curious, is that an option to pull out? I was just curious why that was in there.
I'm sorry.
Pay you to participate in the airport authority, like, would you pull out? Or is this something you would just have to say?
No, yeah, no, we wouldn't. It's similar to what Commissioner Firehawk mentions, is that, you know, if we're, if we're looking for grants or if there's certain things that we need to say, to point to the county's support on these items. We need to be able to say it's in this plan.
Got you, that makes sense. And then my last question, is this something for the staff to think about? When you read DA transportation three, increase the reliability and frequency of public transit service? My first thought was, what is the root cause of why we don't have reliable and frequency of public transit service? Because when I read the actions, they don't, they don't line up. When I read the actions, for example, I don't think the fact that we don't have high quality ADA pro wag compliant transit stops is the reason why we have unreliable and not frequent transit service. Or like any of those actions collectively, they don't seem to answer the question of solving the issue around increased reliability and frequency of public transit services. Something to think about, those actions seem to not necessarily correlate with the wording, the way it's written. I'm not sure if my commission, other colleagues agree with that or not, but I read.
We add something in the objective about also increasing accessibility of the transit system? Because I think that's what.
We have that in your overarching goals, don't you?
Yeah, I think, I think that's what three, four is really getting at, is that we have stops, but a lot of them, people with mobility issues can't even get to because they're in the dirt on the side of a road.
They're not sheltered, too.
Yeah.
And they may not want to.
The lack of shade at our bus stop.
Yeah, I think that that would help. I think part of it is, right, you have to get more people riding the bus, right? And so I, I don't know if this addresses it, maybe some of it, but.
So so some of that may change, so the bus, the bus situation may change, because you you know, right now it's free. It's free coming out of the pandemic. There's maybe some pressure on the system that they need to start charging again. And they've also had some pressure on the system about finding qualified drivers. And so that's where I think the regional transit system might help to make, give them a a pool of individuals. And if we could ever get this conversation with the university, that the university would somehow another integrated system more fully into the regional system, like in a lot of places where the university and the public system are really kind of one system together. You, I think we, we could be more, I think you would see more options for public transportation across the region.
A regional idea.
Right.
And actually, just to build on on that, that was a point that I had. In in the, again, back to page sixteen, where you, where you talk about the bullet, bullet points on on the multimodal transportation plan implementation. It, it doesn't talk about cross-agency collaboration and, you know, with 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 the city or UBA or, and again, we've, you've heard it here, you really, you're not gonna do this without, without broader collaboration. And and there's a lot of plans out there, and obviously we have the MPO, MPO. I mean, there's a lot of authorities out there and that are trying to do this already. So I, I just, it seems to me that that needs to.
Be strengthened, a little bit stronger.
Stress, yeah, how do you? I mean, I know you talk about it in some places and the MPOs mentioned. But in the implementation piece in particular, I think there should be something about how you're collaborating with with other agencies.
Fair enough, I, I mean, yeah, okay. All right, any other closing comments, thoughts?
I had some minor comments, but I put them in the document and I shared them, so we don't need to sit.
Did that give you what you need, staff? Is that all helpful?
Great.
Thank you.
Kevin, you made me nervous, man, you went like this first.
Families get more than answers.
Yeah.
They do.
Lucky stick.
All right. Well, I guess we move to committee reports, right? Because this is officially sort of a meeting.
Yeah.
So just, we can go through number four, if we move to committee reports, any committee reports from any commissioners?
I do, but if somebody else has one, I need to pull it up.
Thank you, guys. I don't think anyone else has any, sorry, no.
No, no, it's fine. The, sorry, we got there quicker than I had it ready to go. The Rio Places twenty nine Community Advisory Committee met. And there are a couple of proposals for feedback. We get there. Uh, one of them is for Arden Place on Rio Road. Yeah, we kind of know about this already a little bit. Anyway, it's going for feedback to to sort of change the the small area plan such that it would convert some of what's core to flex. And then they had a proposal for some housing. Part of what's been expressed is some difficulty getting to that sixty percent AMI with, even with the the tax credit, their tax break credit incentive that we've got. So that's, but yeah, there's a, some conversation about that. And I am actually conveying this secondhand because I had a work event that night. Shoot.
We can come back.
Yeah, sorry.
That's good. How about we move to the Board of Supervisors meeting April twenty third and April thirtieth?
Thank you. Yeah, just to pick up on Commissioner Moore's point, Arden two is coming in. And had you attended, you would have seen that there was a power, there was no power that night. So apparently the presentation was done on a laptop with a bunch of people looking over a shoulder. So it was apparently as successful as that can be. But that's a, I think what Mr. Moore was trying to talk about in that particular one, that's in the form-based code area. And form-based code has a core section and then a, the flex zone. And we were working with the applicant to work, to rezone it to allow more flex zone, to allow them to not have some of the commercial issues. We'll be bringing that to you probably in the June, July timeframe. I think that's where that rezoning probably will make its way to the planning commission. So as far as the Board of Supervisors meetings, not very exciting, at least from your perspective, or maybe it is. The first one on the twenty third was a public hearing for the new budget. And the one on the thirtieth was for the establishment of the property tax rate and the personal property tax rate. So no items were considered that are ones that came before you all. So that's the report for.
They see the residential chapter ne- next, right? At their meeting this week?
Their housing.
Housing, sorry.
Housing, yeah, they're, they're looking at housing tomorrow.
Got it, got it, thank you.
And as far as new business goes, I think I'll just touch on a little bit something we talked about yesterday, Commissioner Missile. And that was, we had something scheduled for the first meeting in June on to tenth. And that item was a ZTA for the round two of the data centers conversation. And just been made a decision to pull that off the agenda, I think they're gonna go to a public meeting first before bringing it to you all. And so that opportunity's opened up. And the suggestion that I put out yesterday to to you is that I will scramble and see if we can't bring you a presentation on, list of the items, you know, several meetings back, we all had the conversation of wanting to have a general update of things. Housing may be a good one to have on that day, because I know that Stacy has come out with a recent, with the housing report. Unfortunately, I know you will not be here that meeting. But I'm gonna work to try and find something this week to fill in on that. And but if I fail to find something on short notice, we may end up coming back and asking you all to cancel that meeting.
Does anybody have any high, like, based on the, you know, you mentioned housing, are there, there's transportation, there's schools, there's other topics? Is there any maybe second choice if housing is a first choice that we might want to listen to? Transportation came up.
Transportation came up, and I think the suggestion was, like, really talk about, like, what projects are we working on, where they stand? And I think Kevin's suggestion was that we have a meeting with VDOT on the the twelfth, and we'll be able to bring you the freshest information possible. We can do that probably on the the meeting on twenty fifth, because I think we only have one item that night. So we can, I I hear you all, you want to be better informed of, you know, the development of of a lot of these different aspects that we've talked about in the conference and plan. And so we'll try and do a better job of providing that. Obviously, we've been sucked, a lot of our time's been sucked up with the AC forty four. But I think we can get back in rhythm of trying to bring you all topical reports. Sure, sure. To the extent that, and I'm not suggesting this, I just know that we've talked about this a lot. To the extent that it might be helpful at some point is to have the gentleman from taxes come in and talk about the Ag Forest of Texas, the differences in how that happens. I know we saw a memo that got distributed by, I don't think it was an inside person, I think it was an outside person that we somehow another got copied on. It was an odd way that it ended up in our mailboxes. But I know sometimes we've talked about, sort of, what's the impact if a property does this versus this? And that may not be a very long conversation, but I think the gentleman was out, the gentleman, is his name Frank? I may be wrong. The gentleman whose office is right down there.
Pete Lynch.
Yep, yes. That might, when he was coming to talk to us, he was out of town. And I think somebody else sort of did the, did the, the pressy for him. But so that might be something since we tend to have a lot of conversations about, well, what's going to happen to the taxes on this piece of property if we turn it into a molehill?
And you, and we got a truncated version of what the, of what the supervisors heard.
Yeah.
That's what it was.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
Thing I'd like to hear about, and they will hear it when this comes forward, but since I wasn't here when the county implemented form-based code.
Yeah.
I, I'd be very interested to hear about more about how the county has done form-based code and is it, you know, just generally speaking, I'm fascinated by the idea and how we could apply it more broadly.
Great.
Well, just some ideas.
Thank you so much. Can I just real quickly, Mr. Murray? As far as form-based code, we're in, doing a lot of work right now with sort of updating the form-based code that was adopted for Rio. And we'll be bringing you something in the next couple of months as a, as a work session to on that specific thing.
Cool. Great.
So we'll take care of that then. Thank you all for the suggestions. We'll try and find something for you. I, I hate, I hate to hold a special meeting if I can't really load it up with a bunch of good topics. And if it's like AFD, I think I'd rather cancel and bring it to you at a different time.
Got it. Let's bounce back to Commissioner Moore.
Yeah. And thank you for the save on Arden two, Mr. Barnes. And also just the other proposal that came before the CAC for conversation, perhaps also huddled around a glowing laptop, I'm not sure, was a community meeting with for six hundred Rio Road West, so other side of twenty-nine there. With a proposal for several multifamily, sort of essentially right past the pawn shop. Just up the hill slightly to build several multifamily buildings there, up to a hundred and fifty-three in the proposal.
Buildings or people?
Units. Yeah. And so that would be, technically, that's a conversion to, from commercial office to neighborhood model district. So.
All right. Let's see, we, any old business or items for follow-up?
I would just, I would just like to, you know, we're having all these outdoor things right now. And so I can't tell you the number. First of all, you don't realize how public you are. People know who we are, even if we don't know who they are. So just be aware of that. I can't tell you the number of people who've come up to me recently with the library book sale and the green elephant over there at album, what is that, over, over by where the ACAC is.
Plant sale?
Huh?
The plant sale?
Yeah, the plants of it's that space who said to me, you're, you're on the planning commission, aren't you? I said, yes. And I said, why isn't this, why aren't these place, these parking lots being used as, as houses? As houses. And I said, well, you know, if you'd like to have that, you can buy it and then you can do whatever the heck you want to. But that's not what we do. So just be prepared. Out of all the years that I've been on the planning commission, all of a sudden, the last thirty days, people recognize us. And they want to know why we're not making good use of those parking lots and putting apartments there as opposed to other places in the county. So just be prepared. And some people should be really prepared when their face becomes more public in this domain.
I blame SimCity and City Skyline. They can't just do it. We have to, we have to go through long, long processes.
I told them to buy it.
All right.
I think I'll just add, I run into people at our county's sideries and wineries who are like, oh, the planning commission, I watch it every, every time it's on. I'm like, I, I'm not kidding. And I joke with them like, you need to find Netflix or something like, what is, you're nothing better on? There are people out there who watch the planning commission for entertaining.
They, they watch it for Julian's comedy.
No, someone, someone called me by name. They called, they called me by name. They said, oh, you're Julian. It's like, ooh.
Well, I think we're all, we're all, we're, we're, we're on TV right now and everybody's hearing this.
The thrills.
And we're all grateful to serve. So.
I'm grateful to serve, but
Thank you.
Call my name, bring me cupcakes or something.
So I think we're going to adjourn the planning commission post-taste to Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM. Thank you, everybody.